Terimani has uh has agreed to lead us. And we will get that skeleton of how to approach Bible study in this modern era. Uh rather than just uh um uh just reading and just meditating on some points. Uh he will take us through this uh this particular uh module of how. We can uh approach Bible study. So on behalf of U M A D student ministry, uh let us all welcome. Our uh beloved uh Joseph Mar Ivanios Episcopatimini into our midst. And uh to address this uh Bible study session uh for us. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Um thank you, Achan, for your uh uh able leadership in organizing this meeting, especially the Bible study of our students. Uh this evening, um I'm of course bit late. Uh especially in India, you know, it is so late, it is about twelve forty-five at night at night. And today was a bit busy day for me. And of course, almost all days are a bit busy busy for me. And I'm so glad that about more than sixty, uh you know. People are attending this Bible study. And Achan's presence also creating in me a great joy and happiness. And some students are there and those who studied at the past are also there. And some teachers are also there, some Achans are there. So thank you very much for all your presence this evening. Um you know, let me start with the. The main purpose of organizing this kind of a Bible study is that, you know, lot of youngsters who are studying in Europe. And in some of the universities in United Kingdom. And they really live need a sort of fellowship. Uh fellowship. And I think uh Bible study fellowship will help us to nurture. Uh faith and to deepen our faith. And that so to deepen our faith and to deepen our knowledge in Bible. I think that is one of the main purpose of organizing this meeting. When I just shared this matter with Stanley Achan and the Stanley Achan was very happy in organizing this meeting. So Achan, congratulations for and the special appreciation for organizing this one. And coming to Achan's participation, I'm really uh uh you know, so thankful to Achans who are here. And all those who are here just to uh listen from the word of God. Um with regard to uh the approach of our Bible study, um I have already shared. My views with um Stanley Achan. That it is not not just teaching from one person, we all are learning together. This is the approach that I would like to uh bring before in our Bible study. Usually what we do is. Uh one Achan or some leader will, you know, take a class and others will listen. So what we can do is, um some we can develop, we can just select few. Facilitators for our Bible study. And uh these those facilitators, you know, frame at least. Uh five or six questions one week ahead ahead and send to all. Participants of our Bible study. And they all come prepared. By reading that passage with your own answers. No need to go for any theological books and then. Uh you know, make any theological statements on that one. So you just listen, you know, you just read the Bible. And try to find very plain answers from what you get from the passage. And then we will have discussions together. Uh you all can share your own, um what we call. Your own understanding or your own learning about the text. And finally, the facilitator, either maybe an Achan or a leader. Uh who can uh present a well-structured meaning of that text. That will make our Bible study more meaningful. That is what I feel. In instead of just presenting one person, one message, it would be better. Uh for all of us to study together. Would you like to appreciate that one or just to? Just, you know, the leader should, you know, present some uh thoughts. I think for this way, uh we can pull. Our own several understanding, the several corners of understanding of the one text. And we can just, you know, include our own life applications too. So this is the way I think I I think that would be the better way. Uh the second thing, uh you know, the way that I use for meditation is. Uh usually, I uh pray for a little bit, you know, one or two minutes I pray. Even before reading the Bible. And concentrate myself to uh uh to the reading of the text. And then I focus on maximum ten verses. And then I read ten verses. And again, I pray. So the first prayer prayer, then reading the text. Then the third step is, I just again look into the text and try to find what is the meaning. Inherent meaning in that text. Then I write it down, usually in small, you know, in a sheet of paper. Again, pray. Then try to recollect what I learned from that particular text. And then I try to apply uh that biblical message to my own life situations. That is the way that my meditation is actually, you know, I'm just uh doing. Uh I think this is one of the uh one of the ways that, you know, we can apply as a tool. For our meditations too. Uh this is the initial remarks that I would like to uh communicate. How many of you are in this meeting now? It's about seventy people. It's really a huge, very good number. So thank you very much. Shall we just, today I'm just, since this is the first meeting. Uh it is, I think, a very good time for all of us to meet together. So I'm really, really appreciating your presence this evening. And we can make it as a regular event. Uh either at least two times a month. Is it okay, Achan? Or anyone else? Is it okay for you all?
Yes.
Is it okay? I know sometimes we 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 have some classes, then you you may, you can go there, no problem. And what you can do is just drop uh an email to Achan or a message to Achan. Or a WhatsApp message to Achan, telling that you know this staffs and that's all. And try to be, you know, regular in Bible studies. The second thing is, I think, we can start with the book of Mark, Gospel According to Saint Mark, because it is the first book. And Nishad Achan is also very expert in this field. And we can just. Module the lessons uh by taking small portions. And what the facilitator facilitator, of course, Achan or the leader, uh need to do is. Uh just to frame five questions one week before uh the presentation of that. Uh particular passage. That is the only thing. Then we all can talk together. Is it okay for us or do we need to change our way of Bible study? Yeah, it's a quite open forum. I think you can also share with me. If you have any idea in your mind, then I'm so happy to include that. Uh also in our Bible study.
Terimani, for me personally, this is a uh new dimension of approaching Bible. So.
Yeah.
For me, it's it's a good to go.
Okay, okay. What about children? You know, children means you are not children, Achan, the students. Is it okay? Okay. Okay, then. Then shall we start with a Bible portion? Today I'm talking about the parable of the talents. Before that, I think we can just read that particular passage. Who can just help me to read that passage or myself? Abhijan, could you please just read that passage? Abhijan, could you please just unmute? Is it not?
Yes, Terimani, yes, Terimani.
Right, yeah, read, Achan. Chapter twenty-five, verses from fourteen to thirty-one. Saint Matthew, chapter twenty-five, verses from fourteen to thirty-one.
Terimani, shall I read?
Yes, please.
Gospel According to Saint Matthew, chapter twenty-five, verses fourteen to twenty-one, right, Terimani?
Yes, yes, Achan.
For it will be like a man going on a journey to call his servants and entrusted to them his property. To one he gave five talents, to another two, to another one, to each according to his ability. Then he went away. He who had received the five talents went at once and traded with them. And he made five talents more. So also, he who had the two talents made two talents more. But he who had received the one talent went and dug in the ground and hid his master's money. Now, after a long time, the master of those servants came and settled accounts with them. And he who had received the five talents came forward, bringing five talents more, saying, master. You delivered to me five talents. Here I have made five talents more. His master said to him, well done, good and faithful servant. You have been faithful over a little. I will set you over much. Enter into the joy of your master. Terimani, is it okay?
No, Achan, until thirty-one.
Okay. And he also, who had the two talents, came forward, saying, master, you delivered to me two talents. Here I have made two talents more. His master said to him, well done, good and faithful servant. You have been faithful over a little. I will set you over much. Enter into the joy of your master. He also, who had received the one talent, came forward, saying, master, I knew you to be a hard man. Reaping where you did not sow and gathering where you scattered no seed. So I was afraid and I went and hid your talent in the ground. Here you have what is yours. But his master answered him, you wicked and slothful servant. You knew that I reaped where I have not sown and gathered where I scattered no seed. Then you ought to have invested my money with the bangers. And at my coming, I should have received what was my own with interest. So take the talent from him and give it to him who has the ten talents. For to everyone who has, will more be given, and he will have an abundance. But from the one who has not, even what he has will be taken away. And cast the worthless servant into the outer darkness. In that place, there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth.
Thank you. Let's pray. Gracious and most loving heavenly Father. We bring each and every one of us into your throne of grace. As we are going to meditate on the word that you gave to us. Gracious Father, give us your wisdom. So that we may dwell deep into the text and to unearth. The message that you are going to teach us today. Gracious Father, we bring all our students and all those who. Those who are attending eagerly to listen your word. Lord, strengthen our will, direct our will and life to do what is just and right. On the basis of the message that you are going to give us today. Gracious Father, we bring before you all our students, who are pursuing their studies in different universities in Europe. And Africa, gracious father, give them the wisdom and all enlightenment. So that they may come out in their own studies with flying colors. And to do good for you and for the society at large. Gracious Father, we pray for all Achans who are here, dear. Gracious Father, we pray for all those who bowed down before your throne of grace. Be with us and strengthen us and empower us with the power of the Holy Spirit. So that we may know you more deeply and to love you more dearly. Through our Bible study and through our life actions. Let the words of my mouth and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable to your side, our rock and redeemer. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You know, this is a quite very famous and of course it's quite familiar passage. May I ask you one question, you know, could you please just open, you know, just unmute all of us? It's just like an interactive session. You know, can you just give a title for this text? What would be the main theme that would you like to highlight through this Bible study? We know that this is talking about the talents. What title would you like to give for that particular text? Anyone can raise hands and say. That is my first question. What title would you like to give?
Um I would say like uh rewards of faithfulness.
Faith.
Uh rewards, rewards of faithfulness.
Rewards of faithfulness, right, yeah. Okay, anything else? I think you all, all can join. It won't be, it is not a one-way bishop's, you know, Bible study. We all are studying together. Thank you, Alicia. I think Alicia told, isn't it? Yeah. Alicia from, could you please just tell me, you know, from your, you know, academic background?
Um yeah, so I'm only doing P S E H R M.
Uh huh.
First year in University of East London.
I see. So thank you. Thank you, Ramay. Thank you. Actually, your title is very good because uh you know, here is one question. You know, there are differences in investments of talents. So that, but at the same day, what God expects is only faithfulness. It is not the amount of the talents that we have, but. The amount of faithfulness that's shown to us. So faithfulness, of course, rewards. And faithlessness definitely invite punishment. This is the one of the messages that we see from this particular text. Any other? Achan Mar, what is the name of Gina? Gina, she's also a teacher personally.
Um stewardship, sorry, sorry, Achan.
Terimani, chat will uh respond.
Uh Achan, I'm gonna pardon you.
Oh, okay. So, Abhijan? And stewardship of, stewardship of talents.
Yes, stewardship of talents.
That's similar to what I said as well, Abhijan.
Okay.
Faithful stewardship, that's what I was thinking.
Faithful stewardship, okay. That's also true. That is also very pertinent theme of this passage. Anything else? No, come on, you just say something. We all are intelligent people, you know.
Knowing the master.
Knowing the master. Alicia, I think Alicia can contribute something, isn't it? Alicia Konnekal Matthew. Alicia, where are you from?
Uh you're you're on mute. Sorry.
Hello?
Yes, where are you from?
Uh hi, Terimani. Uh I'm Alicia. Right now I'm pursuing the masters in Hampstead University in Sweden. And I'm from Kadmineta.
Kadmineta?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Then I think so, since you are a master student, definitely you can enlighten us.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Um.
Terimani, every little helps.
Every?
Every little helps.
Achan, I know.
I think that's called a motor.
Every little helps.
But it adds on to.
That actually, this is not a little help, Achan.
Yeah.
You know, when you look at the whole story, a one talent is equal to fifteen years wages of a Palestine laborer in those times. So this is not a small amount. When we evaluate the value of that particular. Uh or the worth of that particular one talent, sometimes we may equate it with the one dollar or one pound. If we just equate in that, you know, if we just apply that rationale, then uh the the title is quite appropriate. But when you look uh uh the whole thing and the worth of one talent in those times is much, it's actually huge, huge amount. It's about fifteen years wages of a Palestine laborer. And even two two thousand, two hundred years ago. Not two hundred. I think in seventeen hundred, when United States of America formed. Uh its translation shows that it is about about thousand, more than thousand dollars. Even today also thousand dollars is more than, in Indian rupees terms, it is about a hundred thousand Indian rupee. So it is not a small amount, small amount. Yeah. Thank you, Achan. Anyway, it it's it's good. Every little helps. Yeah, true. Amona Karamatou? Oh, somebody wrote accountability to. Sam to meeting group. Who is Sam? Sam, actually, I'm actually thinking in that way.
Terimani, and uh message. Gina from Sweden, accountability of God's bidding.
Ah, super, super. Actually, uh this is one of the, you know, one of the messages that I get. Accountability to the truth that God gave to us. Accountability to the truth that God gave to us. And of course, it involves stewardship. It involves faithfulness. And it involves knowing the worth of the master. And it involves definitely, uh you know, uh. The support and the help of every small, simple things. Accountability to the truth that God gave to us. You know, here again, uh when you look at the first verse, he, Jesus Christ is talking about. The kingdom of God or the kingdom of heaven, kingdom of heaven. And when you look at, when we, when we study Bible, usually we read. The verses just before the passage that we are, you know, intend to read. Just before the passage as well as after the passage. That gives us the larger context of the text. You know, in order to understand the larger context of the text, we need to read. The previous passages of the text and the following passages of the text. So anyway, I'm just, I'm, since it is, you know, time is flying and I need to sleep also. In the morning, I need to wake up by five o'clock. That means uh it's too less for sleeping time for me. So I'm just telling you uh that, you know, for our Bible study, to get the larger context of the text that we read. We need to read the previous passage as well as the following passage. That you will get the larger context of the text. And the immediate context of the text talks about the particular passage that we read. Then can you just identify the larger context and the immediate context? You know, what is the subject matter of the chapter twenty-four? Any idea? Chapter twenty-four talks about the end times, end times. That means chapter twenty-four is talking about end times. And chapter twenty-six is talking about the coming of Jesus Christ, no, the crucifixion of Jesus Christ. That means this passage is fixed in an in-between position. That after the ascension of Jesus Christ and. Uh this event is referring to, the event will, even would happen in between. The resurrection of Jesus Christ as well as the second coming of Jesus Christ. So that means this is actually talking about the in-between times. When we talk about the theological terms, when we talk this term in theological, theologically. Basically, the in-between times means the time. You know, between the resurrection of Jesus Christ and the second coming of Jesus Christ. Then this passage is talking about our own context. We all are living in this in-between times. So are we accountable to the talents that God gave to us? Are we faithful to our talents that God invested in us? Are we able to keep our stewardship that God gave to our talents? Then are we able to acknowledge the worthiness of the master who gave that uh the talents to us? Are we really, as Achan said, thankful to the every small help or the little helps? Uh you know, that God gave to us. And again, Achan said, you know, every little things. Helps our li- life and the life uh situations. I think we all get to more than two or three sermons at this moment. So accountability to the truth that God gave to us. Here we, you know, the first first. Uh verse four fourteen, verse fourteen talks about, for the kingdom of heaven is like a man. Traveling to a far country who called his own servants and delivered his goods good to them. And he gave five talents to one, another gave two, and another one. And then another, the the second and next word, next sentence is very important. According to their own ability. According to their own ability. That means, there are differences in endowments. But God values faithfulness. There are differences in endowments, but God values faithfulness. So the question is, what have we done with our lives? Are we accountable and faithful to the talents that God gave to us? Or gave to us. Then coming to uh the first person, actually, you know, I told you that, you know, this, the, the whole. A setting off of this text is, or the location or the plot of this text is. Uh nothing else, it is talking about our own life situations. That means, identify our talents and make use of our talents in the best possible way. That makes our life happy, this is the management gurus tell us. You know, identify our talents. And make use, best possible use of, use of the talents. And definitely that will make your life more happy. So Jesus Christ, two thousand years ago, told us that, you know, identifying the talent. And the worth of the talent, that will makes a difference in our perception to the talents. Then coming to, you know, when you look at the three responses of those who received the talents. The first man, actually, uh you know, he raised another five more. And the second, I, I, I have already told you that, you know, one talent is a huge amount, it is not a small amount. One talent, uh how, you, do you have Bible with you? Which verse, you know, version is with you at present? Can you just look into the footnote of that particular words, one talent? Do you have footnote in your Bible? No?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh one or two can, I think, tell me, what is the footnote in your.
Um this is, until that was worth more than fifteen years wages of a laborer.
Ah, yes, which translation, Mona, this?
Uh, this is N R S V.
N R S V, yeah, that is the fifteen years wages of a Palestine laborer, that is actually the more, you know, authorized version. Then in the N I V, I think it is more than thousand dollars, that is what I told.
In the, in the E S V Thirmani, it is twenty years wages of a laborer.
That is E S V, isn't it?
E S V, yes.
So it's a huge amount, one talent is a huge amount. Usually when we think, you know, it is only in our own currency stamps, this is not the case. This is not the case. So, the talents that God invested in us is not silly talents, but. Huge worth talents, talents having huge worth. You know, God has given us the very client, in a sharp mind to think. No one in this world can contribute or, you know, value or assess the worth of the talent that God gave, gave to us. God has given us the ability to breathe. And no one can evaluate the worth of that, that particular ability of us to, you know. Having the easy breathing. Then God, you know, when you, when we look at the whole, uh you know, our own physiology. You know, our body is working very efficiently. No one, when you go to a medical college, then only you find, you know, how much money do you need to spend to. You know, even the maintenance of one of, one part of your body. So it's huge, so the investment that God gave to us is huge. Then again, the ability to speak, you know, you have a, the ability to think. That is the talent. And you have the ability to reproduce your thinking into words, your thinking into not verbs, thinking into words. So that shows your, in the cognitive level, cognitive capacity. Together with your nervous system and all are in a proper function. So can you imagine the worth of that talent that God gave to us? So it is priceless gift. It is inexpressible gift. So faithfulness to those kinds of inexpressible gifts. Makes us, makes our lives happy and worthy. Now God has given us the ability to learn. I always think of myself, you know, I grew up in, in a very remote village. But God has given me the opportunity uh to study in reputed universities. That is not my merit, it is God given gift. You, you may, you know, you know, even laugh at, you know, uh if I say my own experience to you. Uh for example, uh you know, I grew up, grew up in a pure Malayalam medium school, in a village school. Then, uh you know, I, 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 I had the, you know. What we call, the happiness in securing scholarships even from the university level. And from the Euro, the Western university level also by God. And now, of course, by God's grace, I got a professorship in one of the reputed universities in Western Europe. You know, how do we get it? All this because of God's grace, all these are the talents that God invested in us, so. Make use of the little talents that God gave to us, that makes our destiny. That makes our destiny. So this is what, you know, I would like to uh communicate on this particular passage. Then, when, then again, you uh just look into the responses. Uh that the first person, second person and the third person says. Or the similar, you know, the, the one who received two talents and the one who received five talents. You know, their responses were almost similar, am I right? They are similar, and their actions were also similar, am I right? Both, they, both traded with their, with the given talents and they earned uh two more and five more. But you, could you please just look into the response of the third person? What, what did he do? Are you feeling boring? What did the, the third person do?
He said he's afraid.
Ah, then his actions were entirely different, you know, he just gone and then, uh, and then. Just, you know, put the talent there. Was he really afraid? Do you think that way? Who told that he was afraid?
Ah, that, that, Thirmani, Basma.
Maybe, he may be afraid, anything else, any other answers?
We could say he was lazy, as the um, as the Thirmani says, um.
Yeah, of course, one, of course, one answer is he's afraid, another is he is lazy, then.
Maybe it's not, uh, I don't know if it's the right thing to say, but maybe he didn't have the knowledge as the other two people. For some reason.
Yeah, could you please just look into the, his response, his words? Then you'll get a clue for, you know, uh he, he clue for the reason behind the action.
Thirmani, he looks less bothered.
Pardon Achan?
He looks less bothered because it's, it's not his money.
When he looked at uh Subin Achan, he got two and Stanley Achan got five. And Jinu got one. Then, what attitude or what kind of feeling Jinu, uh you know, would feel?
He may be envious.
Definitely.
He didn't want to benefit, he, he didn't want to uh build the other person, he didn't want to build his master.
Of course, you know, the problem is, you know, what I feel, maybe it is, it is just my, you know, my, uh, you know, way of thinking. Your way of thinking also correct, it won't be problematic. You know, for example, when we look, when I, you know, Joseph, myself got one. And Jason, 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 I think Jason, Jason got two and Stanley Achan got three, five. When I compared all these three, then I found that, you know, mine is two less. Then that created some sort of jealousy. And the comparison blinded me. To see the real worth of the gift that God gave to me, gave or the, God or master gave to me. In our lives also, comparison may blind us to see the reality. Comparison may, uh you know, this is what I think, you know, anyway, it's not the final one. Uh you, what all things, so you, what all comments that you suggested are also correct. You know, that is another perspective on which you look into it, but my rationale is, his words. Could you please just look into his own words, what did he say? You are a hard man. Am I right? You are a hard man, can you imagine a person who gave without asking? Anything from him, he gave fifteen years wages of a Palestine laborer to a particular person. Then, after receiving that huge amount, he is telling that, you know, you are a hard man. That means something blinded him to see the real worth. Of what he received from the master. Sometimes, you know, unfair comparisons may create jealousy in us. Unfair comparison may create, you know, may, you know, blind us to see the reality. See the reality. Rebecca, I think, I think, Rebecca, are you following me? Okay, or are you feeling bored? No, she, she's actually in the students looking at me. Thank you, Mona, where are you from?
Uh Cardiff.
Cardiff, oh, you're also from England, okay, Mona, thank you. So, since I'm a teacher, you know, usually this is the way, you, you can just ask, you know, the way that I teach or Subin Achan. This is some, one of the way that I usually, you know, take my class. You know, I, you know, this is the way, just to make you all awake always, you know, that's the only thing, yeah. So, this is what I would like to, uh, you know, uh, again, you know, you are a hard man. What can I, I mean, another? I knew you to be a hard man, reaping where you have not sown. And gathering where you have not scattered the seed, all are very powerful derogative words. That means that negative think, thinking may contaminate our thinking process, our cognitive level. You know, words and thoughts are closely associated. Words and thoughts are closely associated. So when you look at the words and the thoughts, you know, his thought. Of his master was bit negative. That created negative words. That created negative words and that he uttered, that is the reason why he uttered all those rubbish things. You are a hard man, ha- you harvesting where you have not sown the seed. And you are the one who scattered the seed, you, you are not, uh, yeah. You are gathering the seed, you, you are gathering where you have not scattered the seed. So all those are the very negative things. That means, you know, if we are not able to find. The real meaning and the worth of the talent that God gave to us. Then there is a possibility to contaminate our thinking faculty. You know, if we contaminate our thinking faculty or cognitive level, then that will contaminate the words. Could you please tell me, uh, could you please just def- define what is words? W O R D S, or what is word or what are words? Can you define words, W O R D S? Expression of oneself? Words are thoughts expressed. It is the expression of our thoughts. So if, if it is the words, if this are, if, if words are the thoughts expressed. Then to. Develop good conversation, what we need to do, we need to do, we need to have a good thoughts, thought process. Thought process. So, anyway, I'm just, almost one hour, I'm not going to tell more. Uh anyway. Three things I would like to highlight, number one, accountability to the truth that God gave to us. We are accountable to the master for what all gifts that God gave to us. Number two. Comparison, unfair comparison may lead us to darkness. Both in our cognitive level and in our expressive level. The third thing. Faithfulness warrants rewards, or faithfulness gives reward. And faithlessness wants punishment. So make use of the talents that God gave to us by giving thanks to God Almighty. That will make our life more meaningful and successful. So this is only, this is just a few thoughts that I would like to share with you today. And this is the way I think that we can, uh next Sunday, next day onwards, our Achin will. Uh send a few questions about the passage. Uh and then you can also look into, try to find answers to the answers from the text. And then come prepared in writing, and then you can present, and we all can discuss together. And we all will get more messages from you. And this kind of, uh, a kind of an engagement, make your biblical knowledge more deeper and deeper. So this even happens in between, in an in-between times. In-between times means, uh you know, the time. In between the resurrection of Christ and ascension of Christ to the second coming of Christ. So this message, not, not to anyone else but to us, because we are living in this in-between times. So, there are, you know, inequalities in endowments. Of course, I have talents, Nishar Achan also has talents, Abhur Achan also has talents, you know, Stanley Achan also has talents, Marin also has talents, Justin also has talents, Subin Achan also has talents. But my talent is different from Stanley Achan's talent. Stanley Achan sings very well. But if I start singing, definitely you all will definitely close the soul and go and sleep. And if I say something about history, definitely Stanley Achan starts sleeping. This is the way or you know, we all have our own talents. So never compare one's tal, our talent with others. God has invested in enough talents and Christ's presence and Christ's blessings makes our life a never, never ending festival. Resurrected Christ's presence makes our life a never ending festival. These are the words of a Jorgun Moltman, resurrected Christ's presence makes our life a never ending festival. This is one of the, one of an important statement that always I remember in my mind. So my dear Achans and my dear brothers and sisters and boys and girls. May God bless you. If you have any questions or discussions, the floor is open.
Yeah, thank you once again, Trirmini, for your profound Bible session with us. And as Trirmini said, this floor is open to any questions. Any clarifications, any questions regarding this particular passage? So you can click.